Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Who's gonna begin?
Good morning, councillor. For the record, I'm Priya Danapal, Deputy Public Works Director for Clark County. And we're here to talk today about the parks fee update. And we have with us Rocky Houston, our Parks Division Manager. And we also have Sheri Velasquez, Business Services and Finance Manager for Public Works Online. We have Eric Christensen, Parks Division Program Coordinator online as well. And then Jim Cautz is also online representing the Parks Advisory Board. And he's also here to show support for the recommendations that we're making today. So to begin with, I want to preface the work session today by saying that the last time the park fees was updated was 13 years ago, almost 13 years ago in 2010. And Rocky here will be going into the details of the presentation to talk about why we're asking for a park fee update at this time. He will also talk about the approach we took to update the park fees and the recommendations that we're making. So our ask is to seek concurrence with the recommendations or to seek feedback on any changes that you would like to see. So with that, I pass it on to Rocky to go over the details.
Good morning. For the record, Rocky Houston, Parks and Lions Division Manager. So as my esteemed colleague just said, we're gonna tell you the purpose, why we're here, talk you about the process we went through and the recommendations that came out of the Parks Advisory Board presented to you today, next slide. So the core purpose of why we're here is that we have a structural deficit within our Greater Clark Parks District and a continued increase in utilization of general funds, next slide. So there's a lot of numbers up there. So I just wanna focus in on, first on the Greater Clark Parks District. So preceding these years you see here, the last four years, we've been operating in the red, meaning our standard operating and maintenance budget is utilizing our reserve. Having, utilizing and spinning down that reserve is important and needed. But at the same time, when your cable bill, your electric bill, your gas bill is on credit cards, so to speak, or not bank account, you can't continue to move forward that way. So we're looking at this, as you can see, it goes from $244,000 utilization up to a forecast of a million dollars a year in utilization. That's something we wanna work on, next slide. And general fund, so we have to have a zero, zero cost in regards to costs to our Greater Clark Park District. So for general funds, we're seeing a similar trend in that our current utilization of funds is increasing at that same rate. So over this six-year period of projection, it's about $1.4 million in fund not there that we'd have to find either through our balance or from additional general fund utilization. And the best analogy I can think of is, I just brought my car in to the mechanic to get an oil change. And he says, "Well, Mr. Houston, here's a list of other things you need to do. You know, your brakes are shot, your wheels are bald, your windshield wipers." And we're only here for an oil change. And so now we're starting to look through the process to determine how do we address those other things 'cause we just can't get rid of the car. We have a park system, we need to move forward. And so, next slide. So that reserve utilization and general fund forecasted increase are things that are bringing us to look at options. We only have so many options in front of us. One of those is level of service reduction, just a nice way of saying cuts or not developing additional parks. As you all know, our population is increasing and continue to increase. And with that comes a higher level of a use of our current parks and a need to continue to develop those parks within our Greater Clark Park District. We have, and we're looking at that. Today, we're here to look at one of those tools, which is the park fees review. So park fees are self-choice fees. So these are for typically things that are for personal choice, personal benefit. And as such, they only benefit a small percentage of the population over all the other ways that our parks benefit the community. So this is a way for us to look, as Priya indicated. It's been several years, more than a decade, since we've made any changes. I will put an asterisk is that we did have a turning off of parking fees for a period of time, turned them back on. We turned on shelter rental fees in the Greater Clark Park District that we used to not have. But from a fee, the cost itself, we've not made any changes to those, as I understand it. The last two options we have is a levy-lid lift. So Department of Revenue states that every six years, you should go out for a levy-lid lift. Since 2005, we've never gone out for a levy-lid lift within the Greater Clark Park Districts. We were approved at 27 cents per thousand assessed value back in 2005. Our current rate is 13.4 cents per thousand. At the end of the forecast in 2029, it'd be just barely 10%. So I always think it's great that we're efficient and effective and have a lower tax, but at the same time, we need to make sure we're meeting those basic needs and meeting that recreational need. And there's other funds. So what other tools do we have out there in regards to kinda address these things? We have an internal committee group with our finance team and park staff looking at these other things. And we're gonna be coming back. We're gonna, this is just one of many tools we're looking at, items on that repair list that we should work on, that we're bringing forth. So, next slide.
One thing I would like to add in this slide is the increase of park fee recommendations that we're making will be, will help us partially address structural deficit. We need a combination of the options that are up on the slide to be able to address everything completely.
Thank you. So we started by identifying a subcommittee of the Parks Advisory Board. And I will note that Jim Cautz is our chair, and he is online as well, hearing this presentation as well, if there were any questions for him. But we had members of our Parks Advisory Board, as well as staff, Eric, who manages our fee program. So he's the one who's dealing with parking fees, shelter rentals, those sort of things, and myself. And we had several sessions where we looked at competitors, i.e. other recreational jurisdictions, what their fee programs are, and looked at what our actual costs are, and kinda looked at a way to present what you have. Next slide. The process we went through is that we had those subcommittees. We had a 30-day open public process where we sought public feedback. We had a PAB meeting where we had a recommendation that came forward last September. And then now we're here in front of you for the work session to then bring it forward to see what actions we want to do. Next slide. So what's that mean in fees? So for parking fees, our current fee is $2 to $8 per day, depending upon what kind of vehicle you have. We're recommending, or the recommendation is $5 a fee. Our state parks in Washington is $10 a day. City of Vancouver is $10 a day. Others are $5, too. They're all over the range. And we wanted to simplify. 97% of our parking fees in a park are passenger vehicles. We have seasonal employees, temporary employees, who are at our fee booths. We wanna simplify it for the consumer, the park patron coming, as well as for those staff. And so $5 flat fee just makes that a lot easier. The annual pass is currently at $30 a year. We are looking to raise that to $40. Again, that provides a very cost-effective, if you are a frequent user of our parks, to have that peace of mind of that pass to then reduce that overall cost. And if you use our parks seven, eight times, all the rest of those are free parking, if you look at it from that perspective. Our shelter fees, we looked, apparently we have a flat fee off of small, medium, and large. And what we looked at is, there's a high variance, anywhere from $25 to almost $800 a day for rentals in the greater metropolitan area of Oregon and Washington here. And what we looked at is trying to find an equitable way in regards to our utilization rate and the size of our shelters and kinda have a low, medium, and high cost so that those shelters that are used a lot have a little bit higher cost. Those are used less, so we can kinda, if you're wanting a low cost and they only have 25 people, we have a $60 option. If you have a large group of 200 people, we have a $395 option. And if you only have 25 people and you wanna choose that very large one, but that's an issue we have out in the field, is there's 12 people or 15 people in a very large shelter and they're asked, staff's being asked, "Hey, can you move them over to this other shelter? 'Cause we got a large group." And of course, we can't do that. So again, it's about trying to make sure we're right sizing those operations. Sports field rental fees, currently we're kinda all over. So at Fallida, we don't have a cost. We have a lot of soccer use out there. We have lease agreement or agreements where either they're take care of everything in regards to sports fields or take part or portion to reduce our costs. Or we have an hourly rate. So we wanna provide some equity. We're finding that some groups were reassigning where they would be charged a fee over to Fallida and sort of pushing out sort of local use of that. And that wasn't fair to community members. And so we're looking at an opportunity to having a rate at Fallida of $10 to $25 an hour for a soccer field. At Harmony Prairie Field, Seven Creek, those same lease agreements, or I call them sweat equity, even at Fallida's. If your club doesn't wanna pay those fees, we have an opportunity for you, if you can help us offset some of our operational costs, we can kinda pass that on to you. There's other opportunities about parking passes, discounts and stuff that we could bring forward to you if we did move forward to that, again, to kinda help off of some of those things. And then we only have one room that we really reserve, and that's at Luke Jensen upstairs. We identified that we kinda have two user groups, sort of people in the, next slide, I apologize. This is the Luke Jensen sports field, so that's, again, the rates are fairly similar. But on that indoor facility, is we have people that use it during the day or we have people that use it at the night. And currently, if one person's using it, we kinda don't let anyone else use it that day. So we try to wanna open that flexibility up. In regards to our park permit fees, so if you're coming into a park and want exclusive use of a portion of it, or you're over capacity for an area, our current fee is $25. If you have less than 99 participants, that's $25 fee. Over 100, it's $250. So it's amazing how many of our special use permits come in at 95 people. But that's a huge price jump. So we looked at having tiering, our pricing more fairly to where those initial fees are a little higher, but it's the gradual's less. So it's sort of, and our sort of our à la carte or additional fees are changed accordingly. So if someone wants to come in and open early, it costs us overtime to get someone to come in to do that. We're trying to offset that cost. Amplified sound creates a lot of other concerns from other park users, so there's a little bit of increase there. The other one is alcohol is probably our largest. We don't allow alcohol in our parks, but for $25, you can have alcohol. And so, again, this is, if this is important to you, this allows, there is a fee, but there is sort of that little bit higher cost for that sort of thing. There's a higher risk when you have alcohol in there and different permits that they have to get. Additionally, we don't have any gotcha fees for late applications. So we have a lot of people who advertise something but never come in and actually submit the application. And we rush around with our attorneys and our staff to kinda make sure that we're meeting their needs. And that takes a lot of extra time and work away from other stuff. So again, a lot of other jurisdictions have late fees. And so this is, we want stuff 60, 90 days in advance so we can go through, making sure we have the right insurance. We have all our ducks in a row. And then our attorney reviews it. So it's $100 with 30, less than 30 days to 15 or between 30 and four weeks and two weeks. And then that next third week would be a $200 fee. And we wouldn't accept anything in less than seven days. Next slide.
Chair, I have a quick question. Could you explain the filming photography fee? Are you filming in?
No, this is where a commercial activity, so Nike films or takes photos. I think they have one right now at Van Lake. And so this is where a commercial photographer or movie comes in. This isn't for senior photos, things like that. So these are for those larger things. And they're pretty infrequent, as well as there's other benefits promoting our parks through that thing. So we recommend keeping that fee the same. Sorry, I'm rushing through this. Next slide. The other, and probably the most controversial thing in regards to feedback we had through processes, currently we only have four parks, three that are regional and one that is a Greater Clark Park District that has a parking fee. We've noticed a significant increase in a lot of our destination parks, whether they're a scenic destination, natural destination, or sports. And with that additional use comes additional costs for managing that and conflicts in regards to people parking all over our roadways and other things. And so the, we identified these additional 13 properties that we'd phase in over time, a parking fee that would allow us, again, to manage that use as well as generate additional revenues to offset those costs. Many sports fields have a parking fee. I used to manage a board for recreation for soccer club. And you know, when you went to an event, you always expected to pay $5 or $10. You know, you went to a basketball game, you expect to pay the, an entrance fee and a parking fee. And so that isn't outside the norm for a lot of those things, as well as people spend a lot of time to go out to these other sites and they take us a lot of time. And so the last thing that the Parks Advisory Board recommended was a cost recovery policy. Currently, we don't have a framework in regards to what our cost recovery goals are for these different type of fees, which would be a tool for us to come to you and have that policy set so that as we review fees in the future, we have that framework. And it's not just 'cause Parks Advisory Board or Rocky thinks that the fee should be X, we kinda have that framework and policy to kinda move forward. Next slide.
I have another quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
On these, some of these parks I'm aware of, there really just isn't enough parking right now. And I think even with the fee might discourage some, but there's just not adequate parking.
True. And you know, I know definitely we, Molten Falls, for example, we're looking at alternatives up there to expand parking lot because it's so loved. And part of that is, is that there's an overflow parking lot that no one knows about. And so we're trying, again, to re-change our signage to that the first parking lot you come on is a temporary parking lot and direct people to the, I'll call it air quotes, real parking lot, which we now call overflow. And there's maybe space to expand that in the future. But those cost dollars, of course. So currently, our revenue from, in fiscal year '22, was about $825,000 from our fees program. These changes would estimate about $1.2 million, so about $400,000 increase in revenue, which again, would help offset. Our fees right now are about 60, 65% towards our general fund sites. We have more shelters, more parking in those locations. And so this, we're estimating that, again, most of that revenue would help our general fund properties more than our Greater Clark Park Districts. The next slide. So just to review our public engagement, again, is we had four subcommittee meetings. We had three public meetings. We had a public comment period for 30 days, where we received 19 comments. Additionally, we had a stakeholder meeting with sports teams and identified kinda concerns they had with specifically the addition of the parking fees and changes in our sports fee charges rental options. Most of the feedback was, hey, things are tied for all of us, don't make any changes. There were some that were recognizing the workload and the costs and that our costs are rising and that that was needed. And I think the parking fee for the sports fields were probably the biggest pushback in regards to people were coming there for practice already. They're already coming there, and so those are additional costs. And how would that be addressed? And that was something we had a lot of consideration with the Parks Advisory Board before this recommendation did come forward. Next slide. So I just wanna make, point out a couple of things, is that the recommendation as it sits will begin to address our fund utilization issues that we outlined. Won't solve it, but it'll help start addressing it. This still ensures that 85% of our parks do not have a parking fee. This provides a tiering or shelting that provides a 42% swing in between what we're charging for like assets and categories. This does continue to provide a more equitable rate between event fees by the number of people. And it provides some equity in fees for sports fields that promotes league adoption as a way of sort of sweat equity, reducing any of those fees and reducing our costs as we move forward. Next slide. So this is step one, to start to address those structural deficits. Again, to be repetitive, this will, if it was adopted as is, it's not gonna solve all the problems, but it's those steps. And we're continuing to work and we're planning on coming back here in 2024 in the future to talk more about the other options and ideas that we have to fully address the structural deficit. And with that, I am open for any questions you may have.
Okay, I, well, let me start. So I, just kind of a once-over-the-world kind of impression. I think we need some adjustments. I had written down originally, as you were going through it, impacts. Is this a moneymaker or is it cost recovery? I think that's the focus we should have, cost recovery. You know, and I had some specific questions about, well, large groups, 300 or more. You know, is that a church group? Isn't it a nonprofit? Or is it some kind of commercial activity? You know, I'm not opposed, one, we should have cost recovery. Two, commercial activities should pay their way. And I, the film, filming issue caught my attention as well. The first thing I thought of is a high school student doing a student project. He's gonna get charged 400 bucks or could if someone was arbitrary and capricious in assigning that fee versus Tom Cruise in Hollywood coming into town and dominating the park for days. Yeah, they should pay their way, but, and that gets to equity issues as far as nonprofits and those people who may be disadvantaged economically. But, you know, and I'm not saying that belongs in our church groups, it just, you know, there could be some church groups that have 50 or 100 or a couple hundred people. And then all the ancillary costs on an organization like that, you know, sound. What was the thought process behind the sound? You know, sound, amplified sound's annoying, got it. But what a quite, quite a jump. And how do you put a dollar figure against, well, now it's gonna be $100 an hour? Cost recovery? You know, there's no lasting impact on that. Maybe there should be a flat fee for the use of amplified sound. It almost looked like, yeah, we're trying to dissuade people from having amplified sound or music. You know, I understood, and it gets to cost recovery. You know, if they wanna get in early to set up, hourly rate, got that, 'cause that's staff time. I, you know, I understand that. So I would really, one, support revisiting all of these fees. Two, wanna make sure there's an outlet for groups, organizations, nonprofits that can't afford the rates that you have, to have some kind of process. There could be some kind of sliding scale. It all should be tied to impacts. You know, if you have 300 people up there, does that fee include, well, we're gonna, the parks are gonna bring in extra porta-potties? Are they doing extra trash pickup? I mean, I've seen on Nextdoor some of the photographs of people complaining about the people before them at the shelters leaving trash all over the place. Or huge, they cleaned it all up, but it was a big pile of black plastic bags there. You know, people should self-police or be charged for it, so cost recovery. The other big piece I wanted to say is, 'cause I didn't see it on your slides at all, we have great partnerships with nonprofits, like at Harmony. We need more of that. The other big piece is, you know, we have this two-tier system for financing our parks. I don't know why we have that. We need to move away from that. You know, as cities incorporate, it is a natural process that they take over for services. They should be taking over. We should be transferring responsibility for a lot of these inner-city parks to the city and get that off of your funding stress. So, and I know we've talked about that from time to time over the years, but I've never really seen any heartfelt presentation 'cause, you know, that's breaking from tradition. And I know there, a lot of work went into some of those parks. We should always have regional parks. I'm not arguing against it. Lake Vancouver is a great place. Black Mislake, other places where we have regional parks. We wanna keep them as an amenity for our public. But those inner-city parks, and I know there are some, they should be transferred. We have to figure out a way to have a fair transfer to the cities as they incorporate. Anyway, so I would look forward to moving forward, but I do have some concerns about some of the fees that I saw as being some I thought were fairly exorbitant. And I didn't see necessarily, or couldn't imagine necessarily, what impacts they have that we need to recover costs on versus a revenue stream, a moneymaker for you, for the Parks Department. Anyway, those are my comments and questions. Further, councillor Marshall?
Okay, Glenn, please.
Sure, I have a few questions, appreciate it. I was curious, was the 2005 levy-lid, was that successful?
Yeah, so the creation of the Greater Clark Park District did occur in 2005, and that's where that rate of 27 cents per thousand.
That was the, that was the?
Setting up.
Part of it? Okay, so we've never actually gone for a levy-lid?
No, not in 19 years.
If we were to go through such a thing, would we still have the boundary issues that exist today with the Parks District and part of it being in the city and in the county? And would that fix it or would it keep the definitions the same?
So that depends upon you and then the policy direction we wanted to go to the voters with. So we could go for a simple levy-lid lift and talk about a rate. There's different ways of graduating, sunsetting varieties that way. There's also a way to expand the boundary, and that would be a different vote. That may be two votes that would go out to the voters. We haven't exhausted that review of that stuff. So that then the Greater Clark Parks District would encompass Clark County, not just the unincorporated urban growth boundary of the city of Vancouver. And so that would, due to councillor Mevji's option is that there is one county parks funding stream. There's, you know, the King County model, which is they have a levy they go out for every six years to get updated, which is a county-wide levy. That's, they didn't create a park district, it's just a county-wide levy for parks. There's, it's interesting, it's similar to how Metro does theirs in the Portland Metro area where it benefits local cities as well. So I think 24% of the funds they raise go back into cities to offset their natural resource and recreational assets. And so these are all these other tools that we're looking at. And when we come back, we're gonna explore those in more detail to kinda identify, as you all know, there's a lot of work that goes through in assessing what is that best tool and timing and all those other considerations.
Okay. And then are there programs for low-income individuals to get like parking passes or anything like that?
Currently, we don't. We don't have any policy for that. We do, the only thing that we do have is the disabled veteran. So we honor the state pass, which reduces bureaucracy for those veterans as well as provides it simpler for all of our staff. Currently, the way our policies are set up is our department or division does not have authority to change or waive fees. We have to come forward to council. So that would be something we'd have to set up as a policy in regards to any sliding scale or reductions of any of those fees.
Okay, so I do share the concerns of councillor Mevji. I think there should be a, and I don't know how you do it, but there should be a differentiation between nonprofit usage and commercial usage, for sure. And then, you know, when we talk about the parking fees, that gives me a bit of consternation, especially, you know, comment that was made about using that to manage parking. That gives me real stomach ache because when you're using that as a method to control parking, the people that don't the people that don't come as a result are the ones that can't afford the fee. So I would be very careful with that and be very careful about instituting a parking fee to begin with. I would rather shift some of the burden to some of these other things, you know, events and things like that if we can. I don't know if that's plausible or not, but I would prefer to do that because a parking fee is not very equitable in the sense that it's meaningless to people that do have and it is significant to those that don't. So just some of those things to consider. And yes, I'm supportive of moving forward and looking at it as well. Thank you.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a piece of a much bigger, complex puzzle, and I appreciate you're looking at other models to fund parks. I think parks are very important. I look at the climate change requirements, resiliency, and, you know, just basic shade in the neighborhood are all important things. So I think the public really wants to have parks. It's just the tricky part is how to best fund it that still enables the public to have ready access to the parks. And I know when there was a lift of the parking fees, the public really liked that, but I think it did have very much an impact overall on your budget, that maybe we're still seeing the effects of that, I'm not sure. And I have felt like, I know the, the space fees for the picnic shelters and things, it seems that those were reasonably priced, so I think there's room to increase there. And I do like the suggestions about nonprofit rate or building in some equity. The tricky thing about parking and a fee that, you know, placing the fee that discourages youth, it really is not, not fair. But at the same time, some of the, you know, Molton Falls and some of those parks are just, I think there are some dangerous situations because so many people are trying to get there and, you know, I don't know how to control that. I know that national parks have come up with some systems to try to control shuttles and things like that, to try to control the number of cars that individually are going places. So I support parks and I would support looking at other model. I think Metro would be in particular an interesting one and how they divvy up the funds among the cities that, that would be an interesting model, I think, to look at. And it has been a number of years since there's been an increase and, you know, what people think they may be paying into parks has just diminished over the years. So I, I guess, what kind of advice am I giving you here? I'm not sure. But, so I'd say moving forward and building in as much equity as possible and looking at some of those other sources as well, because I think fundamentally I want the parks to be as accessible to people as possible.
Counselors online? I keep wanting to say Chair Bearman. Counselors online, comments, questions?
Chair, I have a comment.
Please.
Rocky, as you know, I love and support the parks. I feel like I'm at many, many parks events with the county as much as I can for my district. But I do have a lot of concerns about the parking fees. I go to a couple of those parks that were mentioned to impose parking fees, Salmon Creek and Flyta in particular. My child plays academy soccer, which is very expensive. And I know the Salmon Creek Club does a lot of fundraising for children that wouldn't ordinarily be able to afford it. So imposing parking fees on top of the club soccer fees, I think that that's not very equitable and I would, I think it would make it more expensive and some, sometimes impossible for children to be playing soccer for the clubs. So I'm really interested in looking at a way forward away from the parking fees, maybe looking at the levy lift. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Karen, do you have anything?
I would agree with, with what the counselor just, just stated, having participated with so many students who would like to be able to participate in sports to the maximum in our parks and, and do find, the parents do find it discouraging to have the fees as they are structured. Perhaps what was suggested as an overview of the fees, just to look at the overall structure and compare it to something like, Counselor Marshall, I think you suggested Metro. That is, that is a very interesting idea because they've dealt with some of these issues of the county, the cities, where should there be fees that are imposed and where should there not be fees? Those kinds of things are important. And we have a huge accessibility to parks now where there is no fee at all. And that's important to keep in mind, too. And that's, that is an asset to the community that we've, we've got to keep. However, to have that be where the games are played and the, the, the cities and the county have activities that are to really enrich the students' athletic life, that's important, too, for their accessibility. And so we've got a ways to go, I think, to make this be a well-rounded program rather than just presenting it periodically as we haven't had an increase in a long time, maybe it's time for one now. That doesn't go far enough. Let's get the, the picture of where it is that we would like to go and get ourselves in accordance with that. We, we need to make some structural changes, in my opinion.
So where do we go from here? I mean, one, if there are specific concerns with specific fees remaining after you've kind of brushed them up again after our comments today, you know, certainly encourage one-on-ones. But where do we go from here? Do we have another workshop that, to present, to be approved? I mean, I'm not prepared to approve what you've presented today. And then again, I really would like to know what work has been done, what work could be done with transferring some of these parks to the cities. I mean, I think that's a strategic initiative to go ahead. Some of the cities may welcome that, I don't know. I mean, there may be extreme pushback, I don't know. But I would like to pursue that, just kind of, I think that'll have an impact on your budget, budgeting with certain parks. So what do you propose as far as the next step?
Let Kathleen weigh in here, too. I would say a follow-up work session to talk about the equity piece, because that was a huge component, I think, to build a policy and talk about, make sure we're hitting that note, looking at some of the fees, make sure the impact's there and how we can explain that as far as cost recovery. And then looking at, Kathleen can weigh in on this piece, looking at how we transfer parks if that's on the table. I think I heard that loud and clear with all the council's feedback, that we want to make sure that equity lens is there and, and I would want to make sure that, you know, that's available and we talk about that equity piece to make sure we're hitting all the points that you, that you brought up today. That would be my take.
Sounds good to me. Three thumbs up on that?
Yeah, Chair, could I make one last?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, a thumbs up on that for sure. So this kind of goes back to our earlier conversation with the jail, too. When I went out and, and met with the people at Harmony, you know, they were talking about some of the kids that they had worked through, through the years on, you know, like not paying to attend and things like that and how it made a difference in their life. And I would hate to create any kind of a fee that for, you know, for recovery purposes that ultimately leads to less ability for people to be, or kids to be involved in, in things that make them productive and, you know, contribute to their being able to stay in, in good terms and not end up in jail and things like that. So it's just kind of one of those paradoxes that we deal with. So I, I think those sports programs are instrumental in helping our youth, so I don't want to create any, any barriers to that participation.
Chair, I have another comment and question.
Please, go ahead.
Can we go back to the slide with the parks that were being considered for the parking fees?
I think it's two back, one or two back, ma'am.
I just wanted to see that slide again. Okay, so I think three are in my, I think three of these are in my district. I know Salmon, Flyta, Salmon Creek, I'm not sure about Luke Jensen, it might, it might be in my district, so it looks like the majority might, which, these are, Rocky, if you can confirm, these are all in the county, correct? These are not any of the, yeah, they're not any of the city?
Yes, these are all within the unincorporated county. Lackamas Regional Park sits in the middle of the city, but it is in unincorporated Clark County, so I'm just putting that out as an asterisk. The, gosh darn it, we already have a parking fee at Van Lake, which is inside city limits, and Frenchman's Bar has a parking fee that's inside city limits as regional parks. But yes, all the rest of these. And if I can ask for one clarifying question in regards to equity and that sliding scale. So I've been other places where staff have to look at tax returns, look at eligibility stuff, which turns into a very sensitive and confrontational at times situation. And other jurisdictions I've seen where they provide a number of parking passes or whatever that is to an NGO to then work through their programming, to disperse them to those who need those, those things. Is that a solution potentially that would be, you'd be open to, at least us looking at?
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what's, obviously, we want to put less of administrative burden on you as possible. And I'm assuming these parking fees that are handled right now are by, are they self-administered? They're not necessarily people at kiosks collecting fees?
We do have booths. We would be looking to go to a kiosk model as we expand it through, we wouldn't have a.
You would need more staffing for that?
We, we would reduce the current level of staffing by having a parking kitty, you know, the little parking on, kiosk for people to pay with cash or with credit cards instead of coming to a booth, which also helps us with traffic flow towards those choke points at a lot of these sites, so they'd be self-doing. We currently don't have a robust enforcement arm or compliance arm for our parking fees, so it is almost on, it's, it's on the honor system. If someone refuses to pay, they come into the park. And so that, that's the idea that we identified in here, is that we wouldn't be looking to put in more booths. If we did increase parking, we'd be looking to transition those to an automated way. You can pay in advance on the internet, you can use your cell phones with an app, or you can go up to our little, those little kiosks. And those machines cost about eight thousand dollars to install, depending upon what the logistics, electrical, you know, it can be up to thirty thousand dollars for that. And then we only have to collect the cash, if there is cash in it, otherwise all the debit and credit card statements is all in the cloud and through computers.
Rocky, just to clarify, I just want to make sure we're clear for the public, all that's a manual process right now? All the parking is manual, you're doing, it's going to a booth, we have someone collecting it, it's not automated?
We have a combination.
Okay.
So year-round, we have automated kiosks to pay, but in the peak season, we have a booth for people to go to.
So was there public engagement on just this issue? I mean, basically, during my tenure here, the only thing I've heard about is, one, complaining about the parking fee, or two, complaining about not being able to get in the park or it took them hours to get in because of the congestion, the lack of ingress, and, and people having the parking, the year-round parking or the park pass for the annual, but still being stuck in the line by all the individuals paying. I mean, those are kind of things I have heard over the years. And then, and then when, looking at whatever system you have in place, I mean, do you have law enforcement there checking? Do you have park staff checking? I mean, I, I can see some staffing issues here, because obviously, if you don't enforce anything or spot enforce it, people won't pay it.
Correct. And in our, we have concepts where we've looked at identifying a need, a gap in regards to the capacity that the sheriff's office has, code enforcement has versus what our patrons are saying are their needs or our staff's concerns about safety in regards to those parking fee code enforcement issues as well as altercations, verbal altercations, dog-off leash sort of issues, sort of those interpersonal issues that occur. We have a lot of times where someone will just show up at a shelter and they didn't have it reserved. Someone who did reserve it comes and they refuse to leave. Our staff doesn't have authority to tell people to leave. They can do a little verbal judo and try to convince them to, to move on. And in regards to a threat assessment, in regards to sheriff's office, in regards to other things, they're limited resources. Sometimes that doesn't warrant them coming out and, and doing that. And so we do get a lot of post-incident engagement, customer service work with, with those, those people. So that, that is something, you're right, that we, as, if we move forward and increase parking fees, that there, that enforcement element would continue to potentially increase. But what we're looking at is not trying to have two people at every one of these parks at a booth, but streamline that toward the staff that we are adding, are doing spot checking, doing general maintenance, making sure that the bathrooms are clean, the garbage is picked up, and talking to people about that five-dollar fee. And in other places I've been, we have warnings that we'd give out, staff or volunteers would give out those little warnings, sort of reminders of, hey, you forgot to pay. And, and those are pretty good tools as well that, that we've used. I know I'm getting in a rabbit hole and I apologize.
I have a couple more questions, if I may, Chair.
Go ahead.
I just was wondering if during the Parks Committee's discussions about the situation, if they included the sports clubs in this conversation and, and then also, what did, was the levy lift discussed with them at all as well? Not the sports team, but was the levy lift discussed during the Parks Committee meetings? And did they also have any discussions or include the sports clubs in, in the discussion for the parking fees?
Thanks for the two questions, Counselor Belkot. So on the first question, yes, we had a special stakeholder meeting with and invited all of those clubs that we, we work with to come. And we had several members, I can't recall the, all the ones that we had there, but we had, we had soccer, we had a high school, we had softball, and so we had a whole spectrum that we did have a meeting and we spent a few hours talking through that and providing feedback. And, and I think the, the one thing that you're echoing is, is that just one additional cost, you know, and, and I, and I agree, you know, as being on a soccer board and looking at scholarships and looking at those costs, or being a, a park operator and looking at camping fees and people saying, hey, twenty-five to thirty-five dollars a night's expensive, it's usually the lowest cost, you know, fifty dollars, if you have an annual parking pass of forty dollars and you're going to three practices a week, that annual pass becomes a very small cost in comparison to five dollars per. However, that's a real cost and sometimes five or fifty dollars is a make or break deal for a lot, a lot of families. And so we, we went through a lot of that discussion and there was a lot of discussion with Parks Advisory Board about that concern. And I think the, they weighed on this overarching structural deficit and trying to identify some ways to help with that. In regards to the question on the levy lift, that was not part of our scope of the subcommittee, it was focused purely on our fee, program fee. We did talk about those, these other tools, but we did not have them weigh in on that. We did talk about those, these other tools, but we did not have them weigh in on that. And I think that's partially because internally, we're still collecting data and trying to make sure as we move forward and engage the Parks Advisory Board or a subcommittee that we've got the right information in front in regards to those issues. And so in regards to, you know, this is just one of the cards that we're looking at and moving forward. And so we did not talk about those other options and look at that as a solution to move forward. And I think that was, our intent was to come back later this year with more information on that and get more guidance from the Parks Advisory Board and council.
Thank you, Rocky. I appreciate it. That's it for me.
I think for, was someone else?
Kathleen, did you have something?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to ask staff, as you're looking at the fees and also options potentially of transferring some of the assets to a city, is that does impact revenue and expenditure. So we want to make sure we're looking at the entire financial picture. And I would recommend that, you know, staff work on that and then have it actually be filtered through the finance team before it comes back to council for consideration.
Thank you. Glenn?
Yeah, my comment was kind of similar in nature, but I think in order for me to improve any parking fee increase and further implementation of parking fees, I would like to understand the cost of park, you know, having that equipment, having the staff, you know, to really understand, you know, when we have a $3 parking fee, how much of that really is cost recovery? Is it $2? Is it $1? Is it $2.75? You know what I mean? So that we can better understand that because, you know, I don't want a system where we're collecting $3 and we get one of it. That just doesn't make any sense. So I'd like to have that information.
And I know I have old costs in here and parking fees, we grossed $530,000 and we net $339,000. So that's 100, almost $200,000 in cost currently, so.
Great point, Glenn. Thank you. We need to be more efficient than that. We're seeing a lot of complaints about the tolling proposals in Oregon and the cost of administering the tolling program. We don't want to be guilty of that.
I would just like to better understand what all is considered cost, you know, because there's, you know, the purchase of the, there's a lot that could go into the cost and just understanding what, how you calculate that would be helpful. And yeah, I have a thought on the sports groups. And I wonder if the clubs themselves could be charged more and then just give a sticker or something to the club members so that they can get in and park through the duration of their, but then the burden would go to the, to the club. But that might be a way to make that the individual more, because they have other expenses related to all the sports. And so just in summary, it seems to me that we can support some fee adjustments, but you've heard our feedback on that and that we'd like, or at least I'll speak for myself, like to look at the levy-lid lift and, you know, other sources. As we can diversify the sources of funding, all the better. So looking at potentially other sources of funding would be great.
Thank you all for the feedback today. We've got a homework assignment and we will come back here, hopefully before the end of the first quarter to talk again about this.
Super. Thank you very much. So those are, we don't have anything else for this morning. We'll be back at 1:00. Anything before we adjourn? We are adjourned.